Mr. Tarly.
Here.
Mr. Cle.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Sokolowski.
Here.
So, our first order of business is to welcome Connor. Probably want to welcome him at a public meeting next month when it's televised and the community can see this. Our work sessions are not televised. So because it's not televised, I can brag on you for a second before we start our business. Connor, as you may or may not know, is a William Mary student. He is William and Mary, a Williamsburg person as well. He's a swimmer at William and Mary. And from some of my neighbors, they basically have said he's the smartest guy that any of their students, you know, the children of my neighbors who went to high school with Connor, that he was off the charts and that we are, everyone was very happy that you were accepted up at an appointment to the planning commission and that we should all watch out that you're really on top of it. So we look forward to your joining us as well as keeping us on our toes. But thank you, Connor, for adding this to your schedule.
Thank you for that introduction. I think you've set the bar too high now.
I can also say that I had Connor as a, I was his mentor for his governor's school project also before, it's senior year in high school. So it was a pleasure working with him on that.
Oh, that was a blast. I, great memories. I still have all the documents to this day, all the little diagrams is a blast. Thank you, Carol.
Okay, so we will turn our attention to the seven chapters and a preamble. But, and Connor, don't be scared off. We don't usually get a package this large every month. But let's turn our attention to the documents that we got. And I, yeah, I think we just probably need to start at the beginning and work our way through.
Right, yeah.
I have another, I mean, in going through this, obviously, there's a lot less red than we've seen in previous sub-chapters, there's no red. So I guess I'll turn it over to you, Carol, on the side how you wish to go forward.
So that's a good thing, I think. The red is getting smaller in the, in the documents as we move along. Basically, what I did is I took the first, the preamble and the first seven chapters and figured we're close enough that we should be able to go through these fairly quickly. As for next month, as I put in my notice that EDA would like to meet with us to go over chapter seven. And then if it's okay with the commission, I was thinking maybe we could have a work session in April at our regular work session time and do the remaining chapters, hoping to get the final drafts on those. And then with a final document coming to the commission possibly in September and it's all of it together in a final draft with possibly a public hearing scheduled for June, I'm hoping by June, we can probably have live meetings again, I'm hoping by then, so.
So, I thought you said September amongst, did you say September? And then back to June, so I.
I heard September.
May.
Okay, I'm not the only one who heard September. I know we're taking the summer off there for a second, so we're talking.
Oh, I hope not.
Okay, good.
I think we're all ready to come to a closure on the comp plan. I know I am, I know you guys are. It's been a long haul, especially with COVID. So if that's okay with the commission, looking at an April regular fourth Wednesday work session to do the final chapters and then proceed on with going through adoption then. So I'll start out with the preamble. I think this was basically part of chapter one in the old plan. So in many months ago, when we started with this, I think Jeff, you might have been the one that said that this was more like a preamble to the comp plan. And so we pulled it out that way. And we had a few suggestions. I've made all of those suggestions. I know Justin sent me some comments last night and his only comment was the, the second paragraph on the first page was that italicized and it is in the current plan. So other than that, I don't plan on going through everything in any of the chapters other than trying to just highlight any main changes we had and turn it over to the commission. If you have any additional comments or corrections or things you would like to see in each of the chapters.
I just had a minor thing for clarity. The, I think the long block quote is one, two, three.
Right.
Four paragraphs. It's a little confusing that the first paragraph isn't blocked in the same way. It's because it's all, it's all a single quote. So I'm just making that a block quote.
Yeah, I agree with that. So I'll mark that. Everything else looked okay to everyone?
Looks great.
Okay, according to the agenda, at the end of each chapter, we need to have an open forum. There is someone on the line, Marcy. Did you wish to comment?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just, I'm just here listening for my own edification. I'm on the architectural review board, so I'm here to see what the planning commission, which feeds into our work, is up to.
Okay, cool. I just want, I just want to, well, by our agenda and I guess probably some legal requirements. We have an open forum at the end of every chapter. I will just pause for a second and if you want to say something, please do so. Okay, so we will move on.
No comment.
To chapter one, goals.
Chapter one, goals. Basically, I went in and made the correction that the commission asked me to do. I did add to economic vitality, review, evaluate, support regulations to develop housing initiatives for the city's workforce to have an opportunity to live and work in the city. I think that was basically a comment Mr. Tarly you made at the last time we reviewed this chapter. I also went to page 14 and added review and implement strategy developed by the Affordable Housing Work Group to include affordable and workforce housing opportunities in the cities. And it was also in the human services section. So I think I've got that, that in three sections now. So I think that was the main thing the last time we reviewed this chapter that the commission had commented on, so.
Yeah, if I could wordsmith that one on page 12.
Yeah.
That rather than the word regulations, I like that word strategies.
Okay.
Review, evaluate, and support strategies because it may not be regulations. You know, my position is at some point, the city might have to, to jump in and that wouldn't be a regulation. So that's kind of my thought there. And we use that same term in the next one.
Sure.
You said review and implement strategies.
Sure.
So.
But I like, I like it otherwise.
Yeah, John, that's, that's good comment because it can be done internal to just the policy actions of the city staff. We don't need to necessarily have something that is legally a regulation.
Right.
And so since I guess we're sort of at this point, this is also just really, it's not a wordsmithing, but it's a formatting issue. I find this chapter has a different formatting than several others where there's like a number and then an indent. So if you're just like looking down that left-hand most side of that bar, A, B, C, C.
Right.
Yep. Can these things be tabbed in so you can actually see what they are? Because I find this is low, a little awkward, and it doesn't mirror other chapters, which is where it's actually different than just flipping over to the chapter two, our next chapter. Whenever there's a number or a bullet, it's out and then everything else is in it. It's much more readable.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. That makes sense. So indent.
Right.
Den, all the letter, yeah, all the subheadings. I think that's a good suggestion. I had an even smaller thing, which is just the heading, economy vitality. I think the kind of conventional turn of phrase is economic vitality, I see.
Okay. I can do that. Anything else?
One thing that I didn't seem to catch yesterday was after, on page 15, there's no period after the number on environmental sustainability.
Yeah, I already caught that.
Okay, nice.
I saw it when you, I looked at your other one.
Okay, any other comments for chapter one? Marcy, any thoughts on chapter one or should we go forward?
No comment from me, thank you.
Cool, thank you. So we will move on to chapter two, the land categories, which is what we saw pretty recently.
Yes.
We had a fairly long discussion on that undeveloped. And so now that number is.
So now I changed it to undeveloped land. I went through and reclassified different areas as the commission suggested. And you can see in the table now that the numbers have been changed in the table also and also changed in the, in the individual headings. So I think we're a lot closer to what I think, Elaine, I think you actually mentioned that undeveloped number with the William and Mary and so forth. So I think I've done that. So commission, okay with what you have before you now that's that undeveloped land section? I think, Mr. Tarly, that was a question you had at the last one. Does this satisfy your concern there?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then I think, I mean, for me, the other number, I don't have that other graph. But I mean, undeveloped land was the largest number, you know, and it gave this weird impression that there's like lots of land sitting there waiting for people to do stuff. So this seems much more reasonable.
Yeah, so I took, say, college woods and switched that from undeveloped land and put it into the different categories so that it was big parcels like that that made the difference.
Yeah, this looks much more, I think this is a much fairer and more realistic representation of the distribution of land in the city. And so this is great.
I had one small, not a typo, but a thing that's italicized. I don't think it's supposed to be italicized on 210. The the, I'll call it a way for support, the the is italicized and the rest of that sentence is not. Under number two.
Yes. Every time I look at these, I find something small like.
That's why you should stop looking at them.
But for me, this is only the second time we've seen this and we've gotten to this perfection. And on the second draft, I think we're really doing great, frankly.
I noticed something on 24, under residential categories, number one. I think it's supposed to say three dwelling units, plural. So there's like an S missing before the per net acre, if that makes sense.
Yes, perfect.
And then I, I also, this might just be me, but then on 25, so under the same residential categories, number six, that first sentence, I feel like it would read a little bit better. So this land use category is designed specifically for the blah, 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 for redevelopment to, I think I, you'd take out the word a there, just to higher density residential use rather than to a higher density residential use. That could just be me, but I think it reads a little bit better just because uses more general. And I feel like a kind of, it tripped me up when I read it.
Okay, I can do that. I marked those on there. Thank you.
Anything else on chapter two? Not seeing any, I have a call out to Marcy.
No comment from me. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to chapter three, which is our fifth draft.
Yep, I had, Justin, I think you had a couple of good suggestions in this on page 34. The first paragraph, the third sentence, you suggested to just change it to the cities of Hampton and Newport News together containing approximately 67% of the peninsula's population was a little bit clearer than the wording that was in there. And I agree with that, so I'm okay with, with doing that. You also said the printed colors for the Newport News and York County were close. And I think we'll look at change and see if we can come up with another color for one of, one of the other, maybe green or something. But we can, we can fix that in that figure 33 under the population growth comparison.
Sure, that sounds good. I mean, it was, you know, I think once you took a second look, it's easy to tell which is which just by the population numbers, but just to prevent that second guessing, that sounds good.
Right, I agree with that. And then on page 35, you suggested population by gender. To change the first sentence to according to the 2013-2017 ACS, Williamsburg population is 54% female and 46% male is male. And just simplify that sentence, which is easy to do. I think that's okay also, if the commission, everyone else is okay with that. It just, I agree, it simplifies the, the structure of the sentence.
Yeah, perfect.
At the very last sentence of that, there's a comma after 42% male.
Okay. And then on 37, you had a.
36, I just have a question about 36.
Sure.
So for me, on my printout, 36 is the first time, but there are several of them in this where the.
It's fuzzy?
Yeah, I was also saying, can you scroll down to 36 because I'm not 35 on my screen? Yeah, it's, I guess, maybe it's not fuzzy there, but it's, so it looks okay when it's on the computer, but it's fuzzy when it prints out. So I guess, and is matures a normal term for that generation? I thought that was like the silent generation or the combination of silent and greatest. Is that what matures means? Because that's not a term that I'm frequent, common to me.
I think Erin, you looked this up before, didn't you, if I remember right?
I don't like any of those terms, but I wasn't going to say anything. That U.S. Census Bureau uses.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I know that people who are in the silent generation don't like that after the greatest generation. But so this is more neutral and it makes everyone happy. I'm okay with that. And, and, and all the things that are sometimes blurry in our printed out copies on the computer, Carol, they look normal. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, and there was a couple in, especially in chapter five. What I'll go back and do is when we initially did these, we didn't do those in a high resolution and that might be the issue. So I'll go back and look at the fuzzy ones and if, if there are any specific ones that you guys have, if you could send me an email to make sure I catch them in the, in the drawing. Sometimes it's the, when I print a copy, it prints correctly. But when she takes my copy and go print them on the copier, it makes them fuzzy also. So I'll make sure that I have a high resolution for these ones that we think are fuzzy looking in the draft and, and make sure they print better. And we're also looking at printing them on a better paper for the final draft also. So I think that would.
But that's good to know because I actually just thought it was fuzzy because of the generation I was in.
Well, and I think that, I mean, I think that having it at a high gen, a high resolution and then allowing someone who's printed at a lower resolution to save their own printer effort and all that kind of stuff is fine, but it should be as good as it can be from the visual perspective of what's on the website, that's for sure. Okay, cool.
And, and Justin mentioned grainy. I guess grainy is another good word to use for it too, if it's not fuzzy.
I caught something on 35.
Okay.
Would you mind scrolling up to it? It's the last, the last word under population by race, I think, on the last sentence, other localities in the Williamsburg region of similar racial, I was going to say distributions, sort of mixes, just because I think that, that word.
Good call.
Yeah. Much better. Good, all right. Anything else on five or six? I think on page 37, Justin, you had generation matures, live in single family to, to generate material, matures, living primarily in single family, I think was your question on that page.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to whatever other word, but I think it needed some sort of qualifier because without it just sounds like they definitely only live in single family. Whereas, you know, I think we know they might, might live in multifamily as well.
I agree.
Adding the word primarily then is. Yeah.
I think it's live primarily.
Right.
Um, I guess, I don't mean to prolong this unnecessarily, but not totally clear on how the map shows that, even if you know the city intimately. In other words, there are multifamily, there is multifamily housing around the city and I expect each of these districts. So I, I guess I'm just kind of noticing this for the first time now that we've called attention to it, which is always a mistake in these meetings. But could you just explain, Carolyn, so that I can kind of understand how the sentence relates to the map?
I think Erin did this chapter so, and, and did the map. So Erin, can you?
Myself again. Um, so the, the language is actually hasn't changed much since the last plan here.
Yeah.
And honestly, that, that language just came from the previous plan. Obviously, the numbers have been updated to reflect the new census data. We could, well, I'm trying to figure out how the best way is to indicate that.
Maybe it's. Neighborhoods chapters where all the, all the details are about the, about the neighborhood. So it's hard, it's hard to make that reference because it just points out there are, you know, each, each one of these areas has that combination.
Yeah, I don't know how I missed this the first time through.
Create a reference to the neighborhoods chapter instead of trying to kind of expound upon it here.
Yeah, I think that's right. Maybe that, maybe it's, the neighborhoods chapter indicates the degree to which generation matures, live in a single family, primarily in single family residential neighborhoods.
Is that necessary? Is it even necessary? And maybe you said that because it's not, we don't talk about any other group in this chapter where they live.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, it's not really actionable information.
Do we want to take the whole map app?
I think this is, where this potentially is important, and I'm not saying I need to keep it or not, is in the paragraph at the top of that column. Because I think it's setting the stage for one of the unique parts of our population, which is that we have this disproportionate number of people who are 65 and over. And thus, that's probably going to filter into health needs, potentially transportation needs, other kinds of needs. And so if we just totally excise this from this chapter and the neighborhood thinking it's irrelevant, is that removing something that we actually are using as a building block for a different argument or for other arguments?
And maybe then.
Excuse me, Jeff, go ahead.
No, that's all right. I'll just, just briefly, maybe the sentence then needs to say, rather than live in single family residential neighborhoods or distributed evenly around the city rather than concentrated in any one area. Because the map does indicate that.
And I guess just to follow that comment on, the first, the first paragraph, I don't have any issue with. I just don't see how that map and that second paragraph contributes anything to the, to the discussion in, in this particular area. It doesn't matter where they live, the number is important and that's set forth in the, that first paragraph. So that seemed to do what we want.
One thing that I was gonna, that I was gonna mention, following up on what Elaine said, was that with all the people who live in, there's people of that age that live in single family residential neighborhoods, when they, when they need to go into something like, you know, assisted living and that sort of thing, they tend to have to move out of the city. They have to move, they're, they're going to the landing or whatever, particularly that 749 that, that lives, you know, Polly Hills, Yorkshire, Long Hills, whatever all that is. So that, that could be, that piece of it could be relevant to development.
And, and I guess following on James's comment there, the triangle area that's Jamestown Road neighborhoods, there being, those are single family neighborhoods with an entrance corridor, but then roads that can go deep a mile or so in, there's no transportation. Then, you know, public transportation is coming out. So if you have someone who's maturing out of active use of their driver's license, part of why they need to move out of the city is that they aren't able to get the services they need easily. So some, I think, so I think I'm hearing that there's a, a use of this information, but not necessarily here. And for my original comments is like, if we just excise this, are we removing a building block of a different argument that we need to be careful? But maybe we need to return that to Carolyn and Erin to think about how this fits in with other pieces. Because I think we've all set our, our piece of it right now. Carolyn, Erin, is that okay if we?
Yeah, I'm just writing it on my document here to see if it fits in better with the neighborhood section. I'll take a look at that. If not, maybe we just take it out. Well, we'll brainstorm that and see what we can come up with.
Cool, thank you. Okay, so are there any other parts of chapter three?
I mean, the only other thing that Justin had after three was on 38. On the change per year throughout the 30 years to per year throughout the next 30 years was a suggestion. Let me find that in the drawing, I put it on my computer.
Suppose it could also say over the next 30 years rather than throughout.
Yeah, and 30 years should not be hypernated.
Good catch.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so chapter three, Marcy, any comments?
Nope.
Okay, cool.
No comments from me. I just didn't know I was part of generation matures, but okay.
Oh, golly, sorry. Good fortune for you, maybe, that you retired and can enjoy other things. Um, okay. So chapter four, draft six.
Right, chapter four, community character.
I had a suggestion on 42, that whole historic preservation and design review, where the kind of, it goes through all the bullet points, it's like the history of neighborhood developments. I think it would be really clear if like the dates were put at the front, maybe. So it would be like 1881 followed by a description and then 1918 followed by a description. Because I just noticed that, because I didn't realize it was following, you know, like a timeline until I got like further down. And I think it would be really helpful to have the dates up front and then a description following that date. And I think it would be really helpful to have the dates up front and then a description following that date.
I'm sorry, I'm writing it down so I don't forget.
Yeah, of course.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think that could be done with just some easy relocation of a couple of clauses without.
And, and obviously, and.
Surgery.
I mean, anything that makes it easier for the reader is.
Also, Justin mentioned, uh, the Merrimack Trail neighborhoods. To put those in on the page four dash two, and I did look, goes up, Justin. I've got Shella Square in eighty-two, Barclay Square in seventy-one. Uh, Parkway Apartments in the seventies, Merrimack Crossing in the seventies, Colonial Pines in the nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, Colonial Town in seventy, and Prowess Lee in eighty-two, so I'll add those to the appropriate section there to catch those neighborhoods.
Great, thanks, yeah, I think that just, yeah, make sure that when we think through this, the history of the city that we include some of them. Some of them are multifamily, I think it shows how old some of the multifamily is too. Thanks.
Uh huh, so I looked those up today, so I'll add those in there.
There's some stray, a couple of stray apostrophes in there, nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties.
Okay. Yeah, so I marked those. That's the only thing on that page. Anything, anyone else had, Justin didn't have any other comments until four twelve, so do you have anything, anybody else have any comments on any of the other? On four twelve, it was just completed, was, didn't hit, had the L missing. So I've corrected that.
Well, in, in four ten, can just, um, just to confirm, I guess, what I'm expecting, I'm thinking that design review guidelines is bolded, does that mean that's a hyperlink in the online?
It can be.
Or, and or, why is it bolded?
I think a lot of times in the design review guidelines, we bold the, the actual guidelines themselves, but I can, I can not hold that, that's not a problem.
Well, it's done throughout this chapter though.
Okay, I just caught it there, okay, then leave it.
I saw it on four five and four six, I had the same question, but I, I had assumed that it was a hyperlink, but.
Yeah.
Anything else up to four thirteen? I think, Justin, you had the sentence in four thirteen retained the camp, the campus character is awkward, and you suggested to, uh, restructure it.
Yeah, I don't, I apologize, but I probably didn't offer anything more specific than that, I think I just looked at it and didn't really know. It was a long day yesterday too, but I didn't know off the top of my head, just like succinctly say that all that's trying to be said in that, and even, I think the next sentence, I had some suggestions, that might have been a little more concrete, but.
I, I suggest it maybe retain the campus character along the north side and make that a period. And then go into new development.
Yeah, I think breaking that into two sentences makes a lot of sense, yeah.
And that next sentence, that last clause is a little bit confusing too, I'm not sure what, what it is should be eliminated, unless we're, unless we're eliminating the lack of a sidewalk, and I think there's probably a better way to say that.
I would agree, I was a little amused by that as well.
Yeah.
I think, Justin, you suggested a sidewalk does not currently exist in from Phi Beta Kappa Hall, but when should be added? Is that something that's simple, okay with the?
Yeah, maybe just one should be added in order to, uh, connect, um, or to provide a continuous sidewalk along that side of the road.
We might mention safety too there.
It's a good idea.
So I agree with that, but how far down in front of Phi Beta Kappa are we suggesting? Because, uh, we've got the, uh, Juniper along the parking lot edge and some hollies, and so are we talking about going all the way down to Ucrop with it?
Yeah, it's a good point, that does have to end somewhere.
I mean, people can then walk in the parking lot.
Well, that's the way, they, you know, pre-construction, the sidewalk wound in front of Phi Beta Kappa Hall. So, you know, it wasn't along the road, but you could still walk all the way to Ucrop pre-construction.
Hmm. Yeah, it's a good point, to some degree, this is an artifact of the construction process.
But I think e- even pre-construction, there was a, a grass footpath that had worn down there.
Right.
Well, there still is.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right, uh, but i- if we find the natural path that people walk and we can put a sidewalk in there, or at least in close proximity, then I think that makes sense. And while I pointed out the, the Juniper and the hollies, they're not going to walk through those, they will be forced to jump over into the parking lot or, uh, into the bike lane.
I see them in the bike lane every day here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we could, we could always just say recommend, uh, you know, the study or something like that, rather than recommending, because there are a lot of moving parts here that we're not going to be able to, uh, really resolve.
Yeah, and there's also the stand of very tall trees there that the last time I thought we saw some information on this that those would have to go, and that was, there was concern about that as well. I mean, that footpath is right on the root structure of those trees. But, um, just in, in since we've been staring at this one page long enough, um, in looking at student papers, I, I have these sort of pet peeves that it appears that there are maybe multiple spaces in between the third line southwest and Jamestown Road, because the justification is weird there. And on the fourth line from the bottom, there's another one of these weird justifications after a period. You might want to check to see whether or not you have extra spaces there that's creating that.
I think that's just the, that's just the world you live in when you, when you both sides justify.
Well, but, you know, that kind of justification is usually when someone has a double space after the period.
Oh, you're, you're, you're one of those anti-double spaces. I am too.
This is one of those artifacts from typewriters, um, no, I have been mourned out on this one, John, that I have the relic from the, the old age, that at one point I had a manual typewriter when I was in high school.
Do we need to have a conversation about, about turning?
We should have done all this at the beginning, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be saying this arguing for, for session number thirty, you know, this shouldn't be back number one. Work session number one.
Moving forward, anything else in chapter four?
Let me just ask with respect to that sidewalk, is that something we have any control over, is that William Mary's, okay?
That is state property. We have no control over.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But if they ever went to get any, say, federal money, or if it's in our comp plan, it always helps them to get additional grants.
Alright.
So that's one part for having it in there.
Maybe we simply eliminate the, the last clause, the which should be eliminated, which just kind of clarifies the sentence and simply calls attention to a problem that we've observed. And, well, we're not the ones to solve that problem, I think by taking note of it, we sort of take a quiet stand on it as a problem.
Yeah, and I do think that in long run plans for the college, with the redo of not only Phi Beta Kappa, but also the museum, having more accessibility along that frontage is certainly on the plan, so if this would help them getting at the federal level or something like that funding, then. I'd like to get people out of the street.
Yeah, absolutely.
Next thing that I have is in four nineteen, so is there anything in between four thirteen and four nineteen?
Uh, you know, I just, I wanted to, as I'm flipping through these, I'm reminded, uh, just of a general comment, and I don't know that it needs to be addressed, but I did want to observe it just to maybe get the wheels turning a little bit. This is a chapter about community character, and even though the, the, um, you know, it's divided up by street, most of the photographs seem to show a street rather than kind of community buildings that address this question of character. There are exceptions, here's a nice one on Page Street, um, but I, I just, there's a lot of photographs of asphalt, I guess is what I'm saying, so. That's probably okay, but it is, uh, it's noticeable, yeah, South Henry, there's another good example. So if, if it's about the character of the buildings on the street, there might be a call for just a couple of additional photographs of buildings rather than, than the street surface itself.
We can do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, now that I flipped through there and look at it.
My only comment here on four nineteen is that for some reason there was a red hyphen after February twenty eleven.
Okay. Got it?
And on four twenty, if we are going to go in the direction of de-bolding the design review guidelines, I do somehow weigh towards if we have a document linking it versus talking about a document in this, in this document, and then making people have to do research to find it somewhere else on the city's website, which, I don't know about you guys, but this new, this new website I hate right now because I used to know where everything was that I maybe this is where it stays bold and that bold is a link to something else.
I'll look and see if we can hyperlink it in the other parts too. It might be easy to do that.
Let me also mention that the design review guidelines are being reviewed and updated currently, so we're, we're recommending something that is actually currently taking place, so I don't know what the timing is going to be, because it's COVID delayed as well.
Yep.
Okay, chapter four, or at the end of chapter four, any other things on chapter four? Okay, Marcy, your turn.
No comment from me, thank you.
Cool, thank you. Okay, chapter five.
Chapter five basically is, I changed the dwelling unit to, can, we had the long discussion over renter and owner occupied. So I think I've, I've addressed that.
Well, it's still on, on five one, it still references renter, and I, it, it, it represents, you've made the change on the, uh, on the chart.
Right.
But not in the text. And I still, I still think maybe, um, some language explaining exactly what that chart reflects might be helpful. I, I did have a question about like the historic area, you, you've got that as residential, but it is essentially a large rental, you know, because it's only, other than the, uh, other than the Boden Armstead House, it's all, uh, CW employees that rent there, so I'm wondering how that, i- is that skewing the numbers at all? Um, and I, I think the, on, on five dash one, um, you know, we're saying, we're, we're basi, I think it needs to say that, that that the categorization is based on the, the address that the owner has with the city. And this, in, in other words, it, it could well be, well, likely discussed, not, not have the discussion again, but, but, um, a good number of those that are, that are non, that, that show up as non-owner occupied, um, because of the way we're, we're pulling that data. Some of those, more, more of those are owner occupied, and this chart reflects, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I, and I think that could be fixed not by changing the information, not by changing the chart, but by changing that, or, or just a, a, amending the, the, the note in red on five dash one. Or, or the, the source line underneath the, the graph on five dash two. But I think if somebody's looking at that and saying, wow, there's, you know, first, the percent of owner occupied, um, you know, these are estimates, in other words, not, not, not absolutes. Does that make, does that make sense?
I'm writing that on the source. Yeah, and the, uh, the chart on the bottom are the reason you have like historic areas, historic areas, its own neighborhood on on the neighborhood map, so basically we.
It is, it is, but it's essentially, not to, not to insult, uh, Dr. Clee, but, uh, who, who, who's no longer affiliated with it. But it is a big rental, you know, I mean, other than the Boden Armstead House, uh, you know, those are all.
Rennels, right.
R rentals, so.
Bunch of, yeah.
You know, it, it cranks that number up to ninety-nine percent, again, because of the unique character of Williamsburg, and it's not a, certainly not a bad thing, but I, you know, if, if people are looking at this, uh, you know, for, for other purposes, you know, that, uh, I, I think some of those explanations, uh, with a little more explanation would be helpful. Because people might not realize that the historic area is actually the dog street and all that.
Let me see, what did Justin? The map on five three, I think, Justin, you said was grainy, so I'll look at that.
Yeah, I couldn't read it.
So I'll, I'll look at that, that. On five five, Justin, you had the downtown planning area instead of just downtown planning area, so I corrected that on the bottom paragraph on the left-hand column.
Great, thanks.
So I'll work on that dwelling unit, uh, Mr. Boswell, and maybe I'll call you and you and I can see if we can come up some wording for that, that.
Yeah, I think, I think one, one, one sentence, one or two sentences would make me feel better. You know, not, not a, not a major, not a major change at all.
Okay, I'm willing.
Just clarification, thank you.
And then I think, Justin, you had basically had some of the maps were great, but I'll look at all of those and print them back out.
Also, for me, the, the subheadings, like on five seven, five eight, the, the maps are grainy, but these headings are grainy as well.
Yeah, because it looks all right on, on my, I'll check it again. Let me mark it on here so I remember. Hey, anybody have?
Only one, only one additional thing, and it has to do with graphics again, and, and, you know, we, we talked about, um, sort of separating out the, um, the economic development report as a, essentially just one big section that's, that, that includes it without explicitly endorsing it necessarily. And, um, the one, the one place that, um, it's kind of sort of slips in here in a way that's not kind of putting it in quotes and setting it aside as, as this other document that might be of interest and might be taken as an endorsement, and I guess that's why I'm worried, is, is the, the urban grocery store and the residential, the sort of redevelopment of Blatton House, uh, Blatton Building, rather, lot, which to my mind was one of the more controversial recommendations of that report, and so, I, I don't, I'm not even worried about the planning commission perceived as endorsing it, but I'm, well, no, I guess that is exactly what I'm worried about, is is somebody reading this and thinking that this is something that the planning commission quietly is, is, uh, trying to, trying to make happen, and I, I don't think, I don't think that's the case, and I don't want there to be any confusion on that point, and so I think it's, I think it's very effective to have that report set at the end, um, but the one little piece of it that sort of slips in here, as I say, is one of the more controversial pieces of it, and so, I'd, I'd suggest either, unless others disagree, um, removing the illustration altogether, or replacing it with uh, an illustration from that report that's less fraught, might be the best word.
So, would it be okay? So would it be okay if I just say, remove the following as illustrative site plan, remove the illustration and leave the rest as it is? Is that okay with you? And just leave.
Downtown, yeah, recommended a mix of uses on the Blatton House property.
And leave that.
Yeah, I mean, I think just somebody skimming this, I think it would get their attention in a, not in a positive way. Well, some people might read it as a positive. I think just deleting that sentence and deleting the illustration, because then you just simply go right to this thing, this consultant made this recommendation, please see the full report for a complete list of those recommendations. And I think that's totally reasonable and honest and exactly what we should do, whereas this seems to kind of raise it to a higher level of attention and the kind of quasi-recommendation, which might be worrisome for us.
I agree with that.
All right, I can do that. On 5-8, the map is grainy again, so I'll look at that. 5-10, the map, 5-14, so I'll look at all of those.
And for me, all of the yellow headers throughout all of this are grainy, so maybe it's just the copying of it.
Yeah, because it looked fine on our original.
Okay.
Need to change your yellow toner.
You had IT advice, too.
Yeah, that's right. These meetings are a nightmare, aren't they?
And on, Justin, I think on page 522, there was a break in the master, the M in the master plan, for some reason, so I fixed that. On the column and the, on the right-hand side, broke with the master plan.
Oh, yep.
Yep. And then on 524, under the whale subdivision, about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, make 10 lines up from the bottom. You recommend it taken still out and just put in creating. Makes it simpler. And then the only other comment you had, Justin, was Jamestown Road on page 532, instead of developed with the ED to develop, which makes sense. Do you like the yellow in this, or would you rather stick with blue?
I like the yellow.
I didn't like, I didn't like the yellow.
I have a little trouble seeing it, too, but again, it's just the printing, maybe it's just the printing.
Yeah, that's, that was my issue, is I couldn't read it very well, so it could be the printing.
I get lights reflecting off of it, too, more than, more than, yeah, off the blue.
I think in most instances, people will look at it on the web, which I think it shows fine on the webpage.
Nice contrast.
And so the recommendations that are on 534 are in red, that's an addition. Are folks okay with those? Do they think of any addition to add to that?
The, there should be a short, it should be short hyphen term or short hyphen and long hyphen term, just to be consistent about the punctuation. I think that would help with all that spacing, too.
Yep.
Okay, that's a big chapter. Are there, and Marcy, any comments on Chapter 5?
Yeah, now, this is one that I do have a comment on.
Okay, cool.
The hyperlink, the hyperlink that is in the agenda, which is my only way of accessing this, actually links to chapters, to an earlier version, I think, of Chapter 6. So I've been unable to follow any of this discussion at all.
Oh.
I'm trying to get.
So I don't have a hyperlink in my agenda, I'm sorry, Marcy, I can't see me.
Yeah, I've got the online agenda and the hyperlink, that's probably been following along, is clicking on a hyperlink. And although when you mouse over it, it says Chapter 5 Neighborhood, when you click it, it actually, and it says at the top on the, on the tab that it's Chapter 5, it's actually Chapter 6.
I'll double-check that, Marcy, and send you a copy by email, so you can look at.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, not a problem.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll send it to you in a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so now on to Chapter 6, which, Marcy, you might have two copies up.
They have different numbers of pages, so it's, I figured the one was a different, an earlier version.
Got it.
Yeah, and we looked at these chapters long, long ago, it seems like, so this was, this will have the link to Dr. Stafford's full report also. I made the corrections the commission had in the, the staff section of it, it's a long chapter, but it was.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought you were finished, Carolyn, I'm sorry. I was gonna say the, the yellow, right under housing, that introductory explanation doesn't quite, doesn't quite make sense, which doesn't, it doesn't have anything really that it refers to. I think it was referred to, should refer to her study, right? Something like that, says. I mean, her, her study, you know, her study was commissioned by.
Hmm. Yeah, which is based on a study commissioned by the Williamsburg Association, something like that. They didn't commit, yeah, you're right, they didn't commission the comprehensive plan.
Right, exactly.
I'll double-check all the graphs and things.
So, so given the red thing says to read the full report, then you probably should be like 2018 period, this report was commissioned, just use, you know, use the same language both places.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have any comments?
Does the, does the graph reflect the, the rental vacant numbers from Chapter 5? Are they the same, are using the same information for that?
Okay.
Is there also a reason the graph is, like, shifted to the right rather than in the middle?
Weird. It's in the middle on the printed version.
Yeah, it's in the middle of the printed version, it's weird. Went for a walk.
Well, it's, yeah, things have gotten adjusted.
Yeah.
Oh, is that because the, the yellow has been changed? No. Yeah, agreed that it should be centered, but.
I'm, I'm in on the paper copy, so I'll check it from the. Justin, I think you only had one comment in this, and this was on page 638. To change it to Affordable Housing Work Group, not the Workforce Affordable Ability Housing Work.
I didn't catch this before Carolyn, but 6-5, there's a font issue, it looks like.
On 6-5?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, right above the graph on the left-hand side of the page.
Yeah, it looks like it changed, yeah.
And, and so, again, in terms of this, sorry, but just pushing things back on you that we don't need to correct here, but as we're making these changes, it's creating some problems internal to the formatting on page 610, and then again on 617, if you go to 610, I can show you the example, but it's a couple of other times in this chapter. What we have is, I think that a graphic was added, and so the text wraps around weirdly now on 610, so you have 5 in the middle of the second column, and then you go back to narrative, and that happens several times in this chapter. So I'd say, not to drive yourself crazy, just fix the narration piece and then go back to figure out how you need to move these things around, because everything's, everything's a little walking around the page right now, but there's several of them, and there's a page, and I'm trying to find it quickly, which means I won't find it, but that's also in 617. 618 has that, and then a graphic sits, is currently sitting right on top of a chapter, I mean, a part of the narrative later on, if I can find it, but it's deep into this, so.
Yeah, 6.
623 has that.
Yeah.
It's, anyway, you'll, you'll see a whole bunch of them. 626.
624 has that graph on top of the language.
Okay, yeah, it's a sentence that's half, half occluded, so just, this, this is, I don't have as many, as many quarrels of the languages here, it's the formatting, so Aaron, Heather, some, you know, someone needs to go back and get that done. So I guess, given, given all the formatting things that we're bringing up, let's maybe concentrate on the actual narrative, what's actually being said.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I didn't have any problems with any of the narrative content.
The big chapter, also.
It is.
So on 610, maybe, I mean, clearly this is not my wheelhouse, but on 610, the statement, "Most Williamsburg homeowners have been in their homes for less than two decades." And I see that the, the brown block at 80%, maybe I'm just misreading that. Because the brown block seems to be smaller than the rest of it, so maybe I'm just missing something there.
So how I read that is that we go from the 100% mark down to, like, 33% are all people who moved into their homes in the past 20 years. So the 33% have been in their homes more than 20 years, and 60-something percent in less. It's showing when people moved in.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I can see that graph being upside down for some people, and how to think about it, because really what you need to do is you need to grade or read this variegated histogram from the bottom up. You got 5% who moved in before 79, then you got whatever, it's like 7% who moved in between 79 and 89, and you're moving up and up and up.
Yeah, because I look at it, and I think, okay, so 80% have lived in their homes since 2010 or prior. That's, that's how I look at it, but I'm legitimately dyslexic, so.
No, no, that, that's a true statement of the, so the green down is 2009, so basically, 80% of the city has been living in their houses since 2009, back to the 50s or whatever, so that's, maybe it's.
All right, I'm with you.
So I mean, I guess maybe it depends on what you want to highlight. Do you highlight that we have a stable homeownership pool, that people have been living in their homes for a long time? Or do you want to say that fewer, you know, we've had a lot of people moving in or moving around in the past 20 years?
Yeah, I, I think pointing out that most of them are stable is better than pointing out the, what they're not.
I agree with that statement. And if that's what we're trying to do, which I think, you, I don't think you want to be known as a transient town.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one challenge here, and maybe we're seeing this in some of the formatting weirdness, is, is this is, I presume, kind of copy and pasted from, from Sarah's report.
Right.
So it may, it may not be as simple a thing to change this caption as we might, as we might hope. That said, if it is changeable, I think this discussion has been, has illustrated or pointed out a problem we didn't observe before, which is some confusion here.
I'll, I'll follow up with, with Greg on the, on the other chart on that page. I don't see the code for the colors, am I just not seeing it?
Well, it's not on the, what's on the screen, I was actually on a different page myself, So what I have in front of me, 610 is not what's on the screen, so I am now.
6-7, 6-7 is the paper, is the printed version of this, so there's some formatting weirdness going on and.
Okay, yeah, on 6-7, there, it's not, there's no legend.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got the same colors, but they're, but they're different, you know, one, one is age, ages.
I'll take a gander at that one, and once I think I fixed it, what I'll do is just send it to the screen, so that way you get to look at it before it goes to its final draft. Is that okay?
And just for clear, yeah, and just for clarity, Carolyn, your, your on-screen 610, it's the graph on the left, it's, for whatever reason, it's at the paper, the printed version, maps to 6-7, so the graph that we're talking about is exactly that one on the left. That seems to be missing its legend.
Yeah, and it's on my draft, it shows just like you tell us on the screen there, but the page is 6-7, so something happened with the PDF, I think, when it.
I think there's been some crazy formatting. I think there's been some crazy formatting. Going on.
Because that.
In this chapter.
And is my 67 when I'm looking at the hard copy.
Well, luckily, this is a short chapter, so it'll be no trouble.
Carolyn, when you scroll back up to what on me looks like 63, but it shows rental versus owner occupied, that one is, oh, that one too. So any of these horizontal bars? It, it seems like, you know, John has done a lot of lifting on trying to have owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, you know, like this use of the term rental. If we're changing that language in the other chapters, I think that we need to have the similar, the same language here as we're looking at these different kinds of housing.
Well, the other chapters, obviously, the other chapters have rental, but it's, you know, colonial town and, and all of that. So as long, as long as we're, what, what my concern was is why, I'm sure you're saying the same thing, Lane, that we're, as long as we're, as long as rental in this chapter means the same thing as rental in the neighborhood chapters, you know, the apartments and.
The apartments are rentals, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The apartments are rentals.
As long as we're being, as long as we're being consistent, you know, I don't know if we need to change it, but as long as, as long as it means the same thing in every chapter.
Right. So I, I think that there's so many formatting parts of this that Carolyn saved us by stopping the share. So I guess, just from the narrative of what you have in front of you, are there other things to bring up without bringing up any more formatting? So we, the end of Dr. Stafford's, otherwise going to us as Sarah's report, is on 635, and then we move into our recommendations and things like that in the final pages. Those are the ones that we really have, I guess, the power over. I'll count to five, but not seeing anything, we'll move forward. And so, Marcy, were you able to see this chapter? Do you have any comments on this?
I, I was able to see it, and I can see exactly what Carolyn's talking about, because the one that links to chapter five, it was, the graph everybody was talking about was on 67, but the one that links to chapter six, it's on 610. So I can, that I can follow. That's the only comment I hit. I can see why it's so confusing to everybody.
You know, we're in the confusing, the confusion, every time we look at something, I, I have another, another question. But on the, the, the neighborhood housing chart, what are, what are those totals again? In the bottoms of the col, of the columns? Average cost per lot slash unit, 6,821,308, what are those totals?
Oh, yeah, we talked about this before.
Yeah, I think we're, I thought we were getting rid of that.
Get rid of.
Yeah, it's, it's only confusing, I think, and, and doesn't actually mean anything.
It doesn't, no.
No, no, I mean, because all we're dealing with is just the vagaries of where the alphabet broke up the columns, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
The question then, to, right, to, I mean, I thought we got rid of them all, but is there anything, Carolyn, in your world where knowing whole units and average cost per unit across the city is important? Because that is a metric that could just be on the very bottom line. But for me, that's not that.
I'm gonna take that out.
It means something to you or would be helpful to you, then fine, keep that. But the, just the, the reason that we ended the middle H, and then we ended the middle R, doesn't mean, doesn't have any sense to me as being a meaningful statistic.
Okay, yeah, I could just take those out. That's easy enough done. Just the total number of units, it's an important part to me, I think.
Yeah, exactly, and adding up the average costs.
Right.
All righty.
Okay.
Economy number seven is.
So, and, and so the economy number seven, and our agenda says draft four, but Carolyn was bold and put final draft, so how you dare?
This was anticipation, I think.
That's all the time we have.
All righty, economy. I think this was an errant chapter also, but Justin, I think you had on page 75 was a comment, and the other area such as women and marriage. You didn't want to use this area twice, and you can suggest it using sites.
Yeah, or something like that, whatever, if other people.
Have a better.
About a different word, or want, yeah, want a different one. It's, it's pretty minor, but basically, instead of saying other major areas, other major somethings, sites, locations.
This is on 75, you said?
Yes.
Paragraph, sort of in the middle of that paragraph. It's listing a bunch of tourist areas, yeah. Yeah, I think sites is good.
Sites, yeah.
And, and I think on 71, I think we operate three schools in the city. Bottom of the paragraph on the right-hand side about regional economic settings. Matthew Whaley, James Blair, and Berkeley.
Yeah, it's, gotcha.
Going back to the other word, did, did we, is destinations a, a word instead of areas or sites? Sorry, I jumped back. I was just a little slow on the uptick.
That works for me.
I like destinations, too.
I actually think that adds up a better word.
Because we're already using historical sites up above, so that's better.
Yeah, absolutely.
That red, that red part on the front that, that is added, you know, again, we're just trying to make this up sometimes as we go along. What do we want to say there, that?
Well, I remember we discussed this at the time, and, and there was some concern that, that the data, some of the demographic and economic data was affected by the downturn that began, you know, in March of 2020. And so I think we just wanted to acknowledge that while this data has been used for planning purposes, it represents, it includes an anomaly, and so just use with caution, I think, is the.
Yeah, I guess I are not fully understood at publishing. I guess that's the part that.
Yeah, so I, I think a more declarative statement or. We're thinking about this as being something that is being produced in the fall of 2021. We might just want to set it, using publishing, you know, have a definitive date or.
Date, date of adoption.
Date of adoption, okay, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, Jared there is not that. So good catch, Greg, on the two versus three schools, but that just reminds me that we've been working on this so long that it was before Berkeley was back up and running.
You mean James Blair, but yeah.
Sorry, James Blair is back up and running, yes.
And I think, do you know any other suggestion that Justin you had was in using the last sentence on 77?
Yeah, I think the last sentence on the left-hand side. Just to clarify that it means the university and higher student population in Williamsburg. So it's a little more specific.
Any other comments from the commission on that?
Okay, I'm not seeing any. And I guess just, just to, I guess, clarify but say out loud what I think I understand. The, the red at the very beginning of the chapter, the, not at publishing and all that, we don't go all the way back there again, it's red because it's the first time we've seen this, we ask for some language. It's also in italics, which I'm assuming will be maintained to have the emphasis of people's attention to read that. It's fine. Okay, so I will open this up again. Marcy, any comments on chapter seven?
No comments for me.
Okay, cool. So officially, we all have a final open forum, but since you just said no comments, I'm gonna be bold and assume that's good still. So thank you for participating, and thank you for allowing me to call you out instead of gabbling in and out of an open forum when there's just one other person on the call with us. I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you do with ARB. It's very nice. So are there any other discussion points for what we've seen today? Or, you know, for the good of the crowd? Okay, I just wanted to then remind us of what we're gonna be doing in next month. I mean, Carolyn's already talking about that. But with regard to our planning commission hearing, we do have at least a site plan that, so we will need to gavel in and have an official site plan meeting. We will then gavel ourselves out of our meeting and join EDA. We're thinking at approximately four-ish, but my impression is that basically we will move over to that meeting once we complete our meeting and move forward, you know, from my being an EDA liaison and talking with Michelle DeWitt and all that. So I'm not thinking that we're gonna have to sit on our hands for half an hour, but we will move over to their meeting. So we'll probably have to, unless Carolyn and Michelle, I leave it to them to sort out some of these details, but my expectation is that we will close out of our meeting, our Ring Central, and move into a new Ring Central. And even though we might be able to at the city level meet in person in April, when I was talking with my EDA pals a week or so ago, given the fact that there's all of us and all of them, that's gonna bust through comfortable limits of a group meeting again. So if we were just having a site plan meeting, we actually might have met in city councils, but we'll do virtually, because it'll just be, it'll be about 20 people total. So we're gonna stay that way. And then we'll have a work session.
On the 28th?
On the, on our regular fourth Wednesday.
Right, and, and that'll be at four o'clock also.
Cool, yeah. So.
What date is that other meeting?
So our, our regular April meeting is on, wait, March. April, our regular planning commission meeting is April 14th, because we meet on the Wednesday after the second Thursday. That's the rhythm of when we meet. EDA always meets the second Wednesday. And so this is one of those few months a year, over the course of the year, where EDA and planning commission meet on the same day. And so instead of them and us trying to find another day we could all meet, I just thought it was most expeditious to, they start at three, we start at 3:30, we do what we need to do for our own corporate business, and then we could all zoom in together and meet as. So our meeting schedules don't change from what they should be already on your calendar. Wednesday, the 14th is a hearing, and Wednesday, the 28th is a work session, but we just will be using both of those meetings next month. And so gratefully, we didn't have a hearing today. So we, this is our work session, but we will not have one on the 4th. This is it for this month. And Connor, thank you for joining us, and as I said at the beginning, I will formally introduce you to the general public. I won't brag on you as much as I did, so they don't have to have that. But I certainly want to do that when we're in an open session on television, because we do, we're very happy, we're thrilled that you've joined us, we're happy for you to be here, and I want that to be made known publicly as well. But otherwise.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Otherwise, everyone have a good day. I'm off to Second Street to get dinner for the family. It's the way to go. Otherwise, we'll take care. Bye, everyone.
Cheers, goodbye.